They scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll deem the agenda approved. Any council announcements from things that are upcoming or just happened? Councilor Pujer?
I just want to remind those that are interested in the parade, they can go onto the Bridgewater Town, Bridgewater Facebook or your website to download the parade application. We're hoping to get more parade float applications in. The deadline is Friday, so please go to the site, download your application and hoping because parade is only two and a half weeks away, so.
Wow, it's coming up quick. Any other members of council? We should congratulate Councilor Thorburn, who last night became a life member of Branch 24 Royal Canadian Legion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And I sensed from the standing ovation that you got that that's quite, that's quite something to receive that.
It's quite an achievement, yeah. It's not given out like candy, it's just a lot of work, sweat and tears.
Well, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And congratulations to the organizing committee of yesterday's Remembrance Day service. It was fantastic to see so many young people once again at the Senate half and recognizing the sacrifice of our veterans. So please take our thanks back to Sam Colacott and his committee for organizing that event.
Yes, they did. And it was so wonderful to see so many young people there because that's our future, that's our today, and we will remember through them in the CM mode. And I had a call from Lumberjacks and wanted nobody going to be in the parade. I said, "You show up to Legion, we'll put you in the parade." We want them there. And Mustang was there and all those girls, Scouts and Cubs, and it was awesome.
I think actually if you could, because people sometimes ask where the poppy campaign money goes, and yesterday at the Veterans Wing at the hospital, that demonstrated where that poppy campaign money goes. Do you want to just talk about the donation that came from the branch to the Veterans Wing?
Sure, thank you for the opportunity. Every penny raised through the Poppy Trust Fund has to go back to the veterans first, then to the families through burseries and whatnot, and finally through the community. And the vets unit is important to all legions because that's where most of our veterans end up later in life. And we had two requests. We had one for a barbecue, which was a big one, and then a bunch of music stuff for music therapy for our veterans at the wing. And I think right now we only have 13 veterans. There's 23 beds, but 13 there. And when we're in yesterday, I didn't know they were going to make that presentation, but they did. And the music therapist was pretty happy because she got everything on her wish list. So that's where the money goes. And in February of the year, we always make a $3,000 donation to the hospital, Health Foundation, Senior Wheels, and like I say, our veterans and our youth in our community.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, my turn. And so I wrote this out just because I wanted to make sure I kind of stayed on track, but in writing it out, it became quite long, so I hope you'll bear with me. It is regrettable that I feel compelled to start this meeting by discussing the events of this weekend. And I think it's important to provide some closure. This should have been a weekend of reflection with our thoughts of gratitude to our veterans, but instead descended into what I can only describe as one of the most disappointing reactions to a local news story I have ever seen. First, let me explain so it is clear to the public that staff met with the candy store owners and everyone is on the same page and in fact were almost from day one. There was an understanding from the very beginning that if the store got too big, too busy, to in fact go beyond what was a small candy store run by a young teenager and became a full retail operation, it wouldn't be allowed by our zoning laws and it would have to be shut down. And the expectation by the owners was that it would just be a handful of kids each week, and it grew to many times that. And because of that, they knew that because of that success, they would have to close. That was understood from the beginning, and so it was expected. This was not the town approving something and taking it away. Everyone involved knew that if it got to this point, they would have to close. And further to that, everyone, the family and staff, were working together. No issues, no friction. Our development officer did exactly what his job is and did not deserve any of what was thrown his way. And honestly, had it just continued on the path it was up until last Friday's article, would have been just fine with the town and the owners of the store again working together upon it to a mutually agreed upon closing date. What I want to talk about, where I'm incredibly disappointed however, is in the reaction to this article. One article, limited in content, clearly could not possibly contain all the information or tell the full story. And yet, based on that one article, some of the most hateful, hurtful comments I have ever seen from people in this community were written. For the first time as mayor, I had to send one such post to the police for its threatening anti-Semitic content. Under no circumstances are these types of comments acceptable. And is this what we've become? Is this the world that we're living in, a world of extremes and instant reaction? Social media has created a climate where the only way one seems to get noticed is to be outrageous, and when that's not enough, some choose to hide behind a keyboard and write things so disgusting that you would never dare say them out loud. And yet somehow they feel typing it, posting it, for everyone to see is somehow okay. I'm not suggesting people shouldn't complain or comment, let me be clear. And it was just Remembrance Day after all, and people died for our right to comment and complain, but not like this. We should expect more of ourselves and others. We have worked hard over the last few years as a community to change the narrative from one that sees us always putting our community down to one that looks for the positive, asks questions, and while holding people to account for sure, does so with respect and dare I say, a little class. I thought we'd made great progress, and yet with one article, that all began to unravel. Each of us on the receiving end of these tirades is human, regardless of what side of this issue you are on. Now, I have thick skin, you have to in this role, but that doesn't mean that these things don't sting. For example, this Friday, I was at my son's last high school football game ever, playing in the playoffs on the field at Katy in the snow. Should have been one of those memories we share as a family for a very long time. At that moment, however, is when this entire issue began to blow up. It wasn't until we got home that night that my wife in tears said to me, "You didn't even congratulate your son when he came off the field because you were too busy working on your phone on this issue." I missed that moment, and I can never get that back, and that's mine to bear, and I'm not sharing this for your pity, but hopefully to give you some idea what happens when we, community, media, all of us, allow ourselves to get caught up in this world of extremes. For me, that was trying to get information to the public before things got out of hand, and in that instant, I missed something I shouldn't have. And that's on me, but for me, that was the cost. There's a certain expectation when you're elected to office that you will be on the receiving end of criticism, and I get that, but there's a difference between disagreeing with a position or an action of town or a council and resorting to name-calling using derogatory and hateful language. Each of those takes a little out of you. We don't play favorites here, one set of rules for every decision we make, and every decision we make, we try to make to better this community. For example, if you don't yet know how the sidewalk in front of King Street Beer got approved and how it was through a bylaw put in place by the request of another business years before this business ever opened, or that there are setbacks and limitations that are required in some locations, and it means a little more work to get that put in place, then you should not be commenting, let alone accusing people of corruption. We are each responsible and accountable for what we say, be it online or in person, and there's no free pass to make such baseless comments about someone just because of the job that they have. When I'm posting, as I did this weekend in response to this, I need people to understand that it takes about six hours to put everything together. It's important for me to collect the facts and present those in the public with as much detail as is needed to be clear. And I believe now, after three years, I would say it's also what people have come to expect of me. I presented the facts, but unfortunately, in reaction to what was, what I was reading, I could have chosen better words to describe things. I am human, and through this was dealing with an issue that was spiraling out of control, not based on factual information, but on rampant speculation and assumption. But I take ownership of my actions, and I'm going to apologize to the callbacks for how my words may have been received. My intention, as well as theirs, was not to cause any ill will. Everyone in this building, staff and council, are all working to make our town better. Do we always hit it out of the park? No. And people don't always have to agree with every policy, bylaw, or rule that's in place, but if you want to change them, there's a way to bring that about. Every one of us around this table is here because we want to be part of the change in this amazing town. And it is an amazing town. With almost 500 businesses in Bridgewater, this town is not dying. With residential growth continuing to outpace most communities in the Maritimes, we are not dying. So to those who continue to make those statements, you are simply wrong. So I want to challenge those who write these negative comments. Challenge people who feel their contribution to the world is best done through attack and unfiltered comments. I challenge you to change your mindset, to try and see the good in things, in people. Think about what you're about to write and the impact it might have on that person or this community or yourself. Think about that young family or new doctor looking right now at a region as perhaps a place to settle down and what they might think seeing what you are about to post. Think about your son or daughter and what they might think if they read your comment. Think about your employer and how they might react, but most importantly, think about the person you want to be. Do you really want to be that person so full of hate, so full of anger, that all you can think about is how fast you want to try and knock somebody down? I challenge you to take that energy and to put it into something good. Souls Harbor, the Food Bank, the United Way, any number of service groups or clubs in this area could use that energy to make the difference you seem so determined to see but unwilling to action. Here's your chance to change that. I will continue to champion this community, I will continue to defend this community and the people who live and work here, and defend your right to respectfully disagree with things we may say or do. I also endeavor to learn from my mistakes and take ownership of them and lead by that example, and in return, I ask that you do the same because we are stronger together than we are divided because we are Bridgewater. So thank you for indulging me in that. I don't see any delegations here today, so we move on. Before you have the minutes of October 28th, the regular council meeting, any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we'll deem the minutes approved and go down to reports and recommendations. Senior Safety Program October Report for your approval. You could say the same thing every month, it's just astonishing the need that's in this community, what we do without this program, I have no idea. So I encourage people to actually read that because it might be eye-opening for some what the need is in this community. The next item is the King Street Victoria Road Traffic Lights. Document 19-144 is there. I don't know if anyone's, Audrey is going to speak to this item.
Okay, so this was an original budget item that we had.
Can you just pull your microphone down, please? Thank you.
And it came in over budget. It was a joint project between the town and the PSC. The PSC's portion did move forward, but it became obvious that the traffic lights and the work around the intersection was going to be a lot over the original anticipated budget. So the request today is that we move it forward to next year and increase to sufficient budget so that we can do the traffic lights and the intersection upgrades all at the same time, and it'll give us a better quality job because it'll be done in the spring as opposed to late, well, almost the winter months at this point. And the request is for $280,000 net HST in the next year's fiscal budget.
Okay. So this is just for information, so we'll go into next year's budget. But are there any questions from members of council on this? No?
Just want, is all the work done on that intersection right now?
The PSC portion?
Yeah.
No, they haven't finished yet.
So there will be some more interruptions of traffic?
Minor. Now, they're going to work on the water main underneath the bridge, so it should be a lot less. The tie-ins with the asphalt paving has been completed at this point for the most part, so I think the big interruptions are done.
Until we do this one next year?
Yes, this one will involve a lot more.
Thank you. Any further questions on that? No, thank you for the update. Our next item is RFP 2019-13 Engineering Services Design and Construction for South End Pump Station Replacement and New Force Main. This is a big project.
Yes, it is, and I just remind Councilor Audrey goes to explain what we're asking you to award, that we did receive funding for this phase of the work under an Infrastructure Canada, Invest in Canada Infrastructure Fund. And so it's just something that council has said that they want to do, we got funding to do it. So the proposal call went out seeking services to do the design and construction management for just Phase, Phase 1 and a little bit of Phase 2, and Audrey can explain that. Okay. All right, so back in September, once we had the funding announcement in place and awarded, we put an RFP out for consultants to do the design of the major upgrades that we had applied for funding for, which is Pump Station 4 and Pump Station 11. We acquired part of that funding, which is for Pump Station 11, full upgrade, and the transmission main over to the wastewater treatment plant from Pump Station 11. Pump Station 4 design is also tied into this because the two pump stations react together, so we asked to have the full design of both done so that the consultant would evaluate both those pumping stations plus the pumping stations around it, just to make sure whatever upgrades we did to both of those pump stations didn't negatively impact everything else because these are major upgrades and they will impact all of the surrounding ones. So this phase will look at the design for Pump Station 4, 11, and the transmission main through to the treatment plant. Then if we get future funding, it would look at a potential reversal of flow from Pump Station 11 to 4, but we will have that kind of, I guess, looked at as part of this, and the detailed design would be in the next phase of upgrades. Any questions on that before I move forward?
Questions so far? So for the, for the public, this is, this is the beginning of getting us to drastically reducing the overflows into the river.
Absolutely.
This is very important work, and I'm sure fully supported by the community.
So Audrey, just a quick question. So 11 goes to 4.
Currently.
Currently.
Yes.
If future 11 will cut just across the river or underneath the river?
Correct.
But you just made a comment that you may look at reversing the flow of 11 to 4, but aren't we just truly doing that? There is no 11 to 4 anymore if this project moves forward?
No.
What am I missing?
Right now, the, the force main goes between 11 and 4. We're going to look at the design of that, but we did not get funding to change that direction at this point, so we may make that as one of our priority recommendations as we move forward, but the funding will only do the upgrade of pump station, the construction pump, will only do the upgrades of Pump Station 11 and the force main across. There's still a force main in place right now from Pump Station 11 to 4.
Okay.
That won't be cut off as part of this.
Why, why wouldn't it? Is there still something needed there?
We didn't have sufficient funding.
Okay.
We would have to put another new main in place.
Okay, okay.
So that's why.
Got it, okay. Councilor Thorburn?
So what would the cost of that be? Because it seemed like if we're going across with 11, that should reduce the flows considerable from the south end, and if we were able to shut that off and just feed that, continue that up the road, that it would be cut down quite considerable on the demand for flows or overflows on King Street.
Yeah, and part of the actual design of this will give us a true present-day cost for that and give us better figures of what we'll be into, so we will definitely present that to council as we move along in this process, but we only have the estimate back from the consultant. It was in the, it was in the $1 million range for sure.
I think whatever we do, it's not going to be cheap. There's lots of options out there, but cheap is not one option.
Councilor McCallum?
I'm not sure if this is a legitimate question or not, but I'm going to ask it anyway. We're going to redesign and rebuild Pump Station 11.
Correct.
Will that accommodate future development, that particular part of the system?
We're going to ask the consultant to look at that and see what that would look like. In our current broad-picture estimate from the original overview of all the pump stations, we were not going to totally eliminate all the current overflows, much less what the future would bring, but we are asking to see what that would look like because we know we would like to build in some design capacity for future, and we'd also like to look at right now, making sure that we accommodate the development that's on the books for sure.
Yeah, we're probably all going to ask the same question or make the same statement, which is probably it's vital that the design incorporate future growth in the community. I'm not sure council would accept anything less than a design that incorporates that ability to grow.
Yeah.
I guess maybe I should put the disclaimer, it may take more than just the upgrades of Pump Station 11 to make that happen. You'll remember part two of this was to basically reverse that flow and put it back so that we didn't have quite as much going. That's not being done as part of this. We'll do as much as we can as part of this, but it may require more upgrades to 4 and 3 to complete the package.
But Pump Station 11 would accommodate if those other pumping stations were upgraded?
We're hoping, we're asking for that as part of this design report, but we don't, we won't know until we get the design finalized.
I'm not sure like that word, "hope."
Yeah, so. So Deputy Mayor and then Councilor.
So Audrey, would that mean that as you go through this process, you could very well come back to council at some point saying, "We need an extra X amount of money in order to up, upgrade that pumping station to accommodate future development?" Is that likely? Or, I mean, not?
We're going to ask that they have future development in it.
Okay.
But whether it stays within the price that we have gotten in our original estimate, we've been very lucky. Our design came in at the budget price that was originally estimated, probably close to two years ago now. Whether the construction phase and all the upgrades that we want are going to fall in there, we won't know till we get a little deeper into this.
Councilor McDonald?
So if the, the design with additional capacity comes back outside of the amount of money you have to work with right now, is that something that would be prioritized and come back to us as an unbudgeted request and we decide if we, we put that money on the table now? Or is it something that you would foresee in the next budget year?
We will definitely ask. I think the timelines that we're looking at, we are trying to have this design completed in probably the February range so that it would be something we could put out in the spring. So we would be back to council fairly early if, if there are problems and challenges that require more funding.
I think that's a good question. I think staff understand this is right now, this is our top priority, is to deal with our infrastructure challenge, so if it requires more funding, we'll have to, we'll have to all come back. We can't, we can't push pause on this. Councilor Graves?
So just in regards to Pump Station 11, if we have the funding, it's important, but is it the right piece at the right time? Seems to me like we don't have a full picture of what's going to go on and in terms of future growth, in terms of how the system really works, and in terms of innovative technologies that we could be using. And I'm just wondering, are we doing it because we have the money? Or are we doing it because it has to get done? Do you know, do you know what I mean?
Yes, yep. I think Pumping Station 4, or 11 and 4 are our two biggest overflows, so of all of the pumping stations, we definitely know those are the two that need to be addressed. 11 has the largest volume of overflows right now. It even overtops 4. So there's no doubt it needs the full upgrades and it need, it's also the closest to the wastewater treatment plant, has one of the biggest sewer sheds to deal with. So I'm, I'm very comfortable saying we definitely need to do something with 11. The reason we phrased this RFP to make sure they looked at all of the other pumping stations while they were doing the design of 11 and 4 was so that we made sure our impact was minimal, you know, on the other stations, and we did the upgrade that made the most sense and takes down the overflows the quickest for all of them. Do we need the detailed design for all of the other ones or at least a much bigger look into it? Yes, we do, but we're looking at trying to do that as part of this study. We also are setting up flow monitors in six of the stations to make sure that we are capturing the correct flows, which we haven't done to date. So I think we're doing a lot of the gathering of information as part of this study that will help us be better prepared for the rest. We won't have them all designed at the end of this, but we will be very confident that this is one of the critical pieces to the puzzle. As for the innovation, I know that's a question for a lot of folks. We are asking this consultant originally as part of this RFP to look at all the options. So I've had a lot of great ideas come back in the last week or so from folks about looking at storage capacity, looking at the different types of upgrades that can be done. That's all part of this design, and we do want them to look at everything possible and find us the best solution. That will be the most economical and give us the best reduction in overflows because that is the objective.
So as more information comes in in six to seven years, we're not going to say, "Oops, we should have done something different with 11"?
I, I don't think. I think we will have that analyzed. And the other thing that we are looking at coming back to council with in the discussion piece is how we want to look at accelerating the look at all the other ones, how fast we can do that, and some suggestions on how we can do it at the same time as this or in conjunction with it.
Okay. Councilor Thorburn?
Just, just a couple more comments. It's my understanding with Pump Station 11, we're taking another pipe across the river.
Correct.
And my understanding from you that that will help with the overflows.
Correct.
Well, I would think the same answer should come from staff, that it would enhance It's going to give room for growth. If we're decreasing our overflows and taking a complete channel to the treatment plant, that in that part that 11 goes into, it would be allowable for future growth. And we're saying no?
The problem is the way the new guidelines from the CCME read, we have to eliminate all overflows. So just because we get growth in one particular area, they don't limit it to that one sewer shed. We have to eliminate overflows everywhere, so until we eliminate them at 11, 4, 6, 14, and 3, we, we can't accommodate growth. It definitely gives us better potential because we're, this is the biggest of the overflows, but we still have to solve the problem at the other side.
So it's going to be completed if we have any room for any growth in any area?
Correct.
I would ensure that.
And it's fair to say, it's a larger plan than just Pump Station 4 and 11 and 3. There's all the pump stations, plus there's the separation of sanitary and stormwater initiatives that we're working on as well, that they all kind of add to that, that piece. And Design Point did look at our sewer shed, I guess in a conceptual way, to look at where are the priority areas for us to focus on, which is what led to us making the grant application to the federal government where we had two phases. So we wanted to look at Pump Station 11 and Pump Station 4, and we received funding for just part of it. So we broke it into two phases on purpose because we knew it would be too much going in to ask for, but those were identified as the priority areas by Design Point and, and staff last spring, I believe.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Audrey, item, provisional item 11, is that truly construction, construction of the pump station?
That's the constr-
Like it says constru-
That's-
It sounds so simple, but-
Yeah, that's the consultants' fees to help us during construction, so that's the testing and-
To truly build it out. And so what is, what is item 7 then?
Oh, that is pump station commissioning. So that's when we get Pump Station 11 up and operational, they test the pumps, they do all the work inside. It doesn't involve as much on the site.
Okay.
Did you have more to go through? Because you kind of said in that part and then-
Yep, no, so, okay, so basically, we did have proposals in from two consulting firms who both qualified. We rated them, and both went through the ratings great, but we do have a successful bidder, which is On Globe Corporation, and they had an estimated cost of $440,000, $741.53. And staff is recommending that we award this RFP to them and get moving with basically the design and, and upgrade portion of this project.
Lots of questions. Is someone prepared to put motion on the floor? Councilor Donald?
We move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, award RFP 2019-13 Engineering Services Design and Construction- Design and Construction Services, South End Pumping Station Replacement and New Force Main to On Globe Corporation for a total cost of $440,741.53, including HST, $399,679.75 net HST, including the full mandatory design pricing, items one to 10, $375,233.50 excluding HST, along with item 14, $8,020 from the provisional items.
Captain, second there, please. Catherine Thorburn, additional questions? Debbie Meyer?
So just to be clear, if you start working with On Globe, and we get to February, and they say, listen, in order to exceed capacity here so we can accommodate future growth, you're gonna come back to us and let us know what that price tag looks like?
Absolutely, we have to, yes.
Okay, ready for the question?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Someone prepared to make the next motion?
I will. Remove the town council for the town of Bridgewater, award the Phase One Construction Services, provisional item 11 at a cost of $127,513.73, including HST, $115,633.88 net HST in fiscal year 2021 and 2022, conditional on budget approval.
Seconded by Catherine Thorburn, discussion?
Question.
Oh.
I'm just, sorry, I'm just making sure I understand this fully. So why wouldn't item number seven be in fiscal year 2021, uh, 21, 22, sorry? The actual commissioning and testing?
Uh, I think, I think we'd probably put it in this year just so that we could make sure that if they needed to do some of like the operations manual stuff and get prepared, we would have it. But it may drift into future years, too.
So then it'll just carry forward?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is appointment to downtown planning advisory committee. We've got a couple of new appointments. If someone would like to make that motion, Catherine Brugge, please.
Yes, Brugge. Uh, that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and appoint the following representatives on the downtown planning advisory committee, each for a three-year term commencing November 2019. Travis Vaughn for Viewpoint Realty as a stakeholder representative, and Andrew Wytok as a resident representative.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McGinnis. Any discussion?
No.
Great, great candidates.
Yeah. Agreed. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. That brings us down to Museum 2.0 update. I know we were all excited to hear how Museum 2.0 is going.
Going a year later?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, so as we all know, we launched Muse- Museum 2.0 about a year ago. Um, it was a platform on which we were gonna move forward, and we were gonna address our community's needs. Um, so the mandate under that was to expand our role and to create new partnerships. So I'm gonna talk about some of the successes we've had, and I'm gonna talk about some of our future initiatives here. So the first thing that we did was we dropped entrance fees in December of 2018, and that has been hugely successful. Um, as of, uh, to date, pretty much we've seen over 8,000 people come through the doors of the museum, which is more than double what we did, uh, in 2019, or 2018, sorry. Um, and so doing away with those, uh, entrance fees, there was a concern, because it did generate revenue, but we're very fortunate that we have a community that's very giving. We have a donation box, and again, we have seen over double the amount of donations as to what we would have taken in, um, in admission fees in the previous years. Okay? So when we launched this, it was really important, uh, to listen to the community, to gain that understanding of what the needs were here in the town of Bridgewater. Um, we did this through community engagement and outreach. So we participated in Afterglow, and at that event, um, we asked members to just share their thoughts about what they wanted in the town, not even specifically the museum, but just the town of Bridgewater. What they wanted to see, what they felt like was missing, what was working for them. Um, we continued on conversations and participated in the Better Block. We went to the seniors' health fair. Um, we visited the Bridgewater Junior High School, and I personally presented to a variety of groups throughout the community, um, the wellness group, uh, the Women's Connect Group, uh, and the VON. I was one of their luncheon presenters. Um, so what did we learn? We learned that people were hungry for new things, and so we expanded our programs. In January of 2019, we started the Engage and Explore series. Now, that series still runs at 2:00 PM on Saturdays. You are guaranteed to come to the museum and, uh, have a hands-on, some sort of interactive experience. So some of these experiences are book talks, some of them are music, some of them are lectures, um, some of them are, are art workshops. They could be any variety of things. Um, and so to date, we've had over 100 programs at the museum in 2019. That's a really big number. Um, beyond that, we've expanded what we do for events there. So part of this was, again, responding to the needs of our community. There are lots of organizations that do not have a brick and mortar, who can use space, and we've created symbiotic relationships so that we can have more events taking place and become a community hub, um, without, you know, with sharing that with other groups. So for example, CD Saturday was a new event that saw, uh, 375 people through our doors one day, which is pretty incredible. Um, we had bikers in the park this summer. We had a celebration for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we had multiple multicultural celebrations as well. So this changed people's perception of the museum, what it was, and it also drew in people that otherwise wouldn't have come, that we wouldn't have had as patrons because, um, of their traditional concept of what a museum might be or what it might do. Um, so I'm moving into exhibits now, so that was the other thing. People wanted to see something new and something fresh on a changing basis, so we doubled down. So traditionally, we've done an exhibit each season. Uh, so for a year, 2019, we did eight exhibits. Um, again, this was a response to our community outreach, where there is a lack of exhibition space for artists in a town, which is just rich, with people who, um, who are looking for space to show their work. Um, we've also created a new partnership that we're very proud of. The Bridgewater Photo Club, uh, has always been, played a role with the museum, but there was a corridor that was unused, and they now have put up rail systems, and they have a photo exhibit up. Um, their demand is so high that they have split the hallway space, and they're gonna start showing two artists at a time and be switching it out on six-week increments, starting in 2020. Um, heading into 2020, we're gonna see 10 rotating exhibits in our gallery space as well. So we're even upping our game just that little bit. Um, as well, when people come through, uh, traditionally in a museum, you would see artifacts in an enclosed gaze space, like an enclosed case, and, uh, and you would sort of view them in an objective framework. We are now doing what's called experiential learning, so hands-on, um, engagement that's interactive, um, that shifts sort of the way that people relate to history, but also allows for them to have a more participatory role. Um, we've got those throughout different exhibits. One of them, you know, you come in and you see, uh, different specimens of lichens that were actually collected from the Woodland Gardens Park, and then you can take away, you can look at them with a loop, um, you can try and identify them, and then you can actually take away a map and go through the park itself and see if you can find them within that space. Um, so asking for that call and response. Recently, we got funding this summer for our locally-made initiative. So that was through a strategic development grant, um, that had three sort of, uh, pieces under the umbrella. One was our gift shop. So our gift shop was revitalized. It got a fresh paint job. It got new shelving, and now we are predominantly selling, um, locally-made, one-of-a-kind works. Uh, the second one was a large-scale exhibition. So it was a group show called The Square Show, and we had 64 artists and one from PEI exhibit in it, and over 138 pieces on show. And the last part of that was the artisan market. So on Sundays at the end of August through to the end of October, we had a market, and there was music there. There was artists that paid table fees and sold their wares. There was games outside, um, and there was sweet treats and coffee on offer. So thinking again about how the site, uh, supports our community, but also offers something a little bit different. Um, as you might notice from up on the screen there, we've done a slight change in our branding, where we've gone to a black-and-white motif, which is very crisp and classic. Uh, traditionally, we used a four-color sort of primary color motif, so you'll see that, uh, this branding has been updated on the website, uh, online, and, uh, and we also got a new road sign right outside the museum with this on it. So it's looking really good. Uh, and it elevates us and reflects our current vision, which is heritage, art, and culture. Okay? Um, so our community partnerships, we couldn't do it without our community partners. All of our Engage and Explore is put on by either staff or community champions who volunteer their time. Currently, we have, uh, social coffee groups on Thursday, which are facilitated by Flourish. Um, and we also opened up our multipurpose room to make it more accessible and to make sure that people were using it. It was underutilized. Um, and now, you know, NSCC hosts different programs in that space. Uh, the Nova Scotia Heritage Fair Society has been there. The Seniors College Association of Nova Scotia did a lecture there. Um, it was used for town council. Um, and it was also used for, uh, professional development training, um, by the local school, uh, for MIGMA education. Um, so all in all, we're doing really well. We're really just communicating all of our assets and highlighting the things that make us great, that we sit on the 22 acres of the park, that, uh, that we have these incredible spaces that can be used by the community groups. Um, we are working towards continuously being sensory-friendly. So we had an audit done by Autism Nova Scotia, and the outcome of that was that we updated the colors and the type of bulbs and the lighting in the multipurpose room. Um, and that enabled us to do a program called Artful Opportunities, which we're doing one next weekend, uh, which basically supports individuals on the spectrum to come into the space during non-public hours and participate and socialize and, um, and do some artwork with us. Um, the big thing that, uh, happened last year as well was our evaluation. So as part of our provincial funding, we are evaluated. It's now just shifted to a four-year cycle. Um, and we're really happy to say that we received a 93.9% rating, which is incredible. Um, in 2016, we took home a 91, and that year, they evaluated all the museums, and we were the top museum in Nova Scotia. Um, so it's incredible that we were able to move up even that extra three points. Um, and one of the new criteria, one of the new categories on that was community engagement. And we were already there. We were already doing that before we even knew that. Um, so the outcome of that is that it is our hope that in the future, funding will be increased. It hasn't increased in over 25 years now. Um, Nova Scotia has the most museums per capita in Canada, um, so we love our history. We are, uh, we're very good at sharing it. Um, and our museum is the oldest municipally-owned collection in Nova Scotia, and it's the fifth oldest history collection in Canada. So it's pretty special, yeah. And I just recently went to, um, a facilities management training session, and it's come to my attention that we may actually be the oldest, uh, purpose-built museum in Nova Scotia as well. So I'm kind of sourcing that out to see if we were the first here. So that's kind of exciting. Um, all right, so going forward, so where do we go from now? Uh, so outcomes in terms of attendance numbers and programs is that the space could be opened up in such a way to allow for a better flow and more people at different events. So an example of this is, um, the multipurpose room like comfortably sits 40 or 50 people. At our SCANS lecture, uh, we had 100 people who came to the event, and we actually had to turn people away, because we simply couldn't, uh, we didn't have the capacity. Um, another example is the elementary art school reception. Um, we do that every year. Last year, we had 351 people come for that one evening. It's a lot of people to fit through the doors. So we are looking at how we can modify the space. Um, I've engaged the town building inspector to see what our viable options are that make sense, working within the footprint that we have and the means that are available to us. Um, so basically, some of those things might be modular walls. It might be creating flex workspaces, and it might be, um, yeah, just reinstating exhibit space that has been shifted and moved around in such a way. Um, the other thing we're looking towards is, um, our off-site road signage. So the gateway signs that were put in by the town, the arrows, the directional arrows have been really, really helpful. We have heard that time and time again in our guestbook. What brought you here? I saw an arrow on a sign. So knowing that people are seeing those and coming. Our gateway signage is very, very old. There are five at different points and exits around town. We're looking at a plan to update those as funds become available, to make sure they reflect our current branding and also our, our draw to our site and to our town. Um, and our next big thing is gonna be museum in motion. So that's gonna be pushing the collection outside of the museum, outside of that brick and mortar, and, um, looking for satellite spaces that can house artifacts, um, and also looking for places where we can share that history that we have. The town of Bridgewater is very rich with history. There are so many firsts here. Um, so that might be through display cases that are off-site. It might be through exploring, uh, history packages that can be checked out through the library. Um, it also might be sharing history facts on the public transit bus or the library's mobile bus. Um, it might be through banners on King Street. Um, but really thinking about how we can take that information that's housed within those four walls and expand it and push it out there so that people are, are seeing it in unexpected places. Um, so that's it for me. I'm gonna play a little video here that just kind of highlights and showcases, uh, the year at a glance here, and then I'll take any questions if there are any for me.
Fantastic.
Cool.
Impressive.
Yeah, unbelievably impressive. I know it took us a while to kind of get there, and we took some, uh, discussion, sometimes uncomfortable at times, and I know that, uh, there are times-
uncomfortable at times, and I know that there are times I wish I had done a better job at moving that discussion around, but the end result, you can't argue with the end result. Fantastic. Hats off to you and your team and all the volunteers that I know make up all, every corner of that museum. It's just built, it's got the fingerprints of all the volunteers in that, that help you. So questions from members of council? Councilor Graves?
Yes, the one about the evaluation, so, which is great, congratulations, higher is always better. In regards to the meeting spaces, do you rent out the space or is it free to the public?
So we do. It's a combination of both. So we rent out the space to certain groups. If a group were doing a partnership where they're facilitating programming that's free to the patrons, then of course, it's a, it's something that we don't charge for. We're looking to, again, maximize rental space. The one feedback that we have is that people want after-hour access. So people want to rent the space in the evenings, they want to rent the space maybe when we're not open. So that's something that is on our action plan of things to look at in terms of how we might make the site more accessible outside of those hours to generate more revenue through that stream.
Interesting, in regards to the outdoor space, that beautiful field behind the museum, do you have any plans to use that or use it more?
So-
Or is it used a lot and I just don't realize?
It's used for events, again, so that's a little bit of a longer-term plan. We're kind of, we're going to be developing a three- to five-year plan here in terms of sort of fruition planning and phases. It would be great to see some sort of covered area that would be for the shoulder season, so in the spring and the fall, that then we could expand upon what we do out there. Right now, we do have tents that we can put up, but it is weather dependent, how we use that space. But it's an incredible, incredible space, and we've started to use it a little bit more with the artisan market. We were putting out beanbag toss and ladder golf and wash, some other games out there, and we've used it in that sort of same way. So we might continue to do that more into the summer, where we put out things every day that the community can use in that green space on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Councilor Todd?
I just wanted to make the comment that I think, like, like our mayor said, that the process to get here was somewhat uncomfortable at times, a little bit bumpy, and, and I think we all knew it was going to be well worth it because we all knew the, the museum held a great deal of potential. I had no idea it could reach this kind of potential in one year. I knew that it was there, that there was a lot of changes that could be made, and that this could be a very successful museum, but I had no idea. So congratulations to you and, and to the commission. This is, it, these are huge results, and I, I don't think any of us were expecting them for, you know, five years.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I really like this idea of bringing some of the collections outside of the museum, because I think it acts as a marketing tool for you, zero-cost marketing tool, most likely. But I think it allows those that might not know where the museum is, for that matter, just to see them in a, in a different light and so on, so I think that's great. The LCLC would be a perfect location for something like that, so, yeah.
And, and we know that the more that we put even online, so we've had some features through East Link, we were filmed as part of Maritime Museums, which just aired a couple weeks ago, but there is a direct correlation between putting items out into public spaces and also putting things online through social media, through other channels, that results in people coming to your site.
Sure.
Yeah.
Questions, all those? Oh, Captain Thorburn?
Just a couple, I was sure it all.
It was trying times.
I, I, I think with the two-point zero and a positive attitude by the commission-
Yes.
-and the town together, because I, we wanted to do something for a long while, but I think nobody had the courage to try and make change, and when we dropped the price of admission, we knew that that was the right thing. When Transit made us stop there, we knew that was the right thing. And we, Wayfinding Science, we knew that that was the right thing. And collectively, all those things together with the proper leadership, and I can't think when that enough, we were able to get what we've got, and the sky is over, and we're continuing down that path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just your, your comments about social media brought just an idea to mind. I worked with the Fisheries Museum, and one thing I really enjoy that they do is they give some kind of behind-the-scenes sneak peeks that kind of tells the story of, you know, museum curation and, and just some of the things we don't see every day about how exhibits are created and all the little things that happen, and I find that really interesting, and I know there's tons happening behind the scenes at, at the museum, and people are watching it grow and develop, and I think that might almost be a, that might be a really interesting view for them as well.
Okay, perfect.
That's great.
It's an idea.
And congratulations again on the, on the evaluation. That's fantastic. Well done. There are no other items on the agenda. We do have an in-camera meeting after this, so motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Captain Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you.